Good evening, everybody. We're going to call this meeting to order at 6:33 PM on October 18th. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Crosby, will you please lead us?
Put your hand over your heart. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Rusty.
Councilmember Lau?
Present.
Councilmember Crosby?
Here.
Councilmember Carter is absent. Mayor Protem Davis?
Present.
Mayor Hepburn?
Present.
Do we have any announcements? Anybody would like to make any announcements? Anybody?
Nobody has requested any in advance?
She's been busy.
There are none.
None? Then we will... Has anyone been pulled from the consent calendar?
No, Mr. Mayor.
With that, do we have any questions from council on the consent calendar? Mr. Crosby is going to recuse himself. He was not here at the last meeting, so it'll be us three?
Just for the minutes.
Just for the minutes. Recuse himself from the consent calendar for the minutes. Other than that, we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar as written.
I'll second.
We are good. We move to... Sorry, my vision. We go to public hearings. Mr. Rusty?
Yes, this first public hearing will be for the Undergrounding Utility District, and Public Works Director Sean Igo will give that report.
Good evening, Mr. Igo.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Tonight you have before you a request to open a public hearing for the Undergrounding District, number eight, which encompasses Arrow Highway from Fairplex Drive and East Street over to White Avenue with additional portions of White Avenue at Arrow Highway. This process is required from Southern California Edison in addition to our municipal code allowing us to hold this hearing and establish this district under Section 13.36. Establishing this district does not commit us to funding this project until we've decided we want to actually move forward with the project in totality. The idea of creating this district was originally brought to the City Council as part of a study session back on August 16th as part of the pedestrian bridge project, at which time, this project connects the Station Square project to the Fairplex project crossing Arrow Highway. And as part of that, we do need to underground these utilities to complete this project. Additionally, this Undergrounding District was noticed in our September 20th agenda, which established this public hearing for tonight. The idea of the district is really to underground, obviously, the portion of the bridge, but also in totality for Arrow Highway and this White Avenue project. One thing to note that is different from what we presented at the August 16th study session is that we did add a portion north of Arrow Highway on White Avenue. The reasoning for this is that we are currently doing our Rule 28 project along White Avenue, and this really completes that stretch of the corridor and really beautifies that entire stretch of that corridor. So it doesn't make sense to leave that small section. So this is the only change and difference you see from the August 16th presentation. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Igo? Thank you, Mr. Igo. We'll bring you back up. We need you. We're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anybody wished to speak on this item, please come to the podium. We're going to keep everyone to a three-minute timeframe tonight, if you would please, and if you do need additional time, please let me know. But we're going to try to stick to that, and as usual, please keep our masks on and just protect ourselves and our staff and everyone here. I don't... Do we have anybody?
We did not have anything requested, at least in the speaker cards.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Let me sure to turn down. Sorry.
Go ahead.
My name is Ed Tessier. I'm a property owner at Arrow Highway in White, and I'm very excited to support this action by the city. I really admire the hard work that the staff has put in on it, and I think strategically it's a great move for Laverne to help revitalize and attract new development to the south part of town. Thank you very much.
I don't think we have any others who have raised their hand? Is that correct?
Correct. We'll give it a minute. Nothing? We're going to go ahead and close public comment. We're going to bring it back to the desk. Council, do we have any questions for Mr. Igo or any issues on this public hearing or on the Underground Utility District?
You talked about the additional part that for tonight that wasn't on the August. And this is a total of 600 feet. So how many of that is the additional that was brought new today?
So the 600 feet is actually going south. This new addition is basically up to White Avenue, or between First Avenue and Arrow Highway. So that entire section was added.
Thank you.
Wendy? Councilmember Lau? Councilmember Protem Davis? Was councilor Protem, whatever. You're all the above.
Just call me Muir. It's all right. It's okay, Mayor.
Mayor Protem Davis.
No, I'm just teasing. I don't have any questions for Sean, but I just want to say I think it's prudent that we look at this section of roadway to underground largely because a bridge that's running over trains would be that much closer to sizable power lines that as an electric utility employee, I know we want to keep people away from and not even cause that to be a public nuisance to where people might accidentally release items that float up into the lines or think it's a game to try to throw something up to the lines. So I'm in strong support of this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Davis. I agree also, and also the fact that we need to do this. In order to move forward and secure more funding for this bridge, hopefully we can secure more funding and we'll be ahead of the game. And as that funding comes in, hopefully we can do it all at once, which would be really great. One-time deal, better pricing, all those kind of things. Kind of like the gold line or the L-line, which unfortunately, they're still scrambling for money to finish to Montclair, to Claremont to Montclair. But I'm also in agreement to this. So being that said, do we have a motion?
I'll move to form Underground Utility District, number eight, and pass resolution number 2182.
I'll second.
Vote, please. It passes. Nice to wet your hands when you've got a mask on. Doesn't work at all, does it? Thank you, staff, very much. Item B, Mr. Rusty?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item B is also a public hearing. This is a public hearing on a development that will be on Fruit Street, Brandywine Project, and it also involves an additional development that'll be down on Walnut that is connected to this. And the presentation will be done by our contract consultant as well as contract planner Vanessa Norwood. So that?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Vanessa Norwood, project planner. This is a two-part project that involves properties on Fruit and Walnut Streets. Fruit Street is a 50-unit, three-story townhome project. Walnut Street is an eight-unit, affordable, two-story, single-family project. I'll first go over Fruit Street project and then move on to the Walnut Street project. Next slide, please. There we go. The Fruit Street project is proposed on a 2.25 acre property that currently contains a small, family-operated nursery and single-family home. This proposal is a request to construct 53-story interlocking townhomes. This project is bounded by apartments to the east, commercial retail uses to the west, across Fruit Street, the commercial center to the south, and Lutheran High School to the north. This project contains a requirement to develop eight single-family moderate-rate affordable homes on Walnut Street, which I will detail later in this presentation. This proposal includes eight entitlement actions. Next slide. The precise plan review and tree removal permit were reviewed and conditionally approved by the DRC. It was determined that the layout, site design, tree removal, and architectural elements of the project meet the development standards of the specific plan as amended and zoning codes. You may recall that in December 2020, a disposition and development agreement was approved and entered into by the council to ensure development of affordable housing units at the Walnut Street site in conjunction with development of the Fruit Street site as the project is required to provide 15% of the units at an affordable rate. On September 28th, the Planning Commission conditionally approved the Affordable Housing Agreement Tentative Track Map and Conditional Use Permit. The Tentative Track Map allows the subdivision of the parcel to be sold as 50 independent townhome units under condo map provisions. With the proposed amendments to the Foothill Boulevard specific plan, a conditional use permit is required for high-density residential projects that meet the site development standards. The proposed design standards would help ensure that residential developments are compatible with adjacent uses. Currently, the city's general plan is undergoing an update that would create a new specific plan designation, specific plan mixed use. The general plan currently designates this site as commercial business park. The applicant proposes to amend this site to the new designation. This designation would not require that each individual project be a mixed-use development. Single-use projects would be allowed, as well as standalone residential projects. This amendment would further the goals and policies of the city's housing element as well as help satisfy the city's regional housing needs assessment obligations. The project area is zoned Foothill Boulevard specific plan. This amendment adds a new category of conditionally permitted uses for high-density residential. The new category would allow 11 to 30 dwelling units per acre and create site development standards. These design standards would ensure that residential developments are compatible with adjacent uses. This type of housing would only be allowed in areas where high-density overlay has been placed on a property, as is proposed for this development. The amendment would allow development of properties currently designated for mixed use to be developed as standalone residential projects. The density of residential developments remains consistent with the existing densities contained in the current specific plan. The Fruit Street project has an interior recreation area parking along the north property line and landscape buffers around three sides of the property's perimeter. The project is proposed to be gated, and the driveway on the south side of the project is restricted for emergency vehicle access only. The median is proposed to be reconfigured to allow entry into the project via a new left-turn pocket from the southbound lane on Fruit Street with a right turn in and right turn out of the project onto Fruit Street. Reconfiguration of the median would also allow left turn into Lutheran High School via a new left-turn pocket from the southbound lane on Fruit Street. The three-story townhome project reflects Spanish and Mediterranean styles of architecture utilizing ornamental metal, gable accents, and decorative awnings. All units would have two-car garages and private open space balconies or ground floor patios. Floor plans indicate that units would range in size from 1,232 square feet to 1,719 square feet and have two to three bedrooms and two and a half to three and a half bathrooms. Integration of this project into the area would complement the existing and surrounding uses, provide additional housing which helps meet the goal to increase housing stock and further the vision of the general plan for walkable neighborhoods. Therefore, the project demonstrates compatibility with all existing surrounding uses. The Walnut Street project is proposed to be located on a .702 acre city-owned property. The city purchased these properties with funds from the city's Low and Moderate Income Housing Fund with the intention of developing affordable housing. As mentioned, Brandywine Homes proposes a townhome project on Fruit Street, and through discussions with the city, entered into a development agreement to provide affordable units on the Walnut site. Through this combined effort, Brandywine Homes would provide moderate-income qualified units without additional city funds. The Walnut Street project includes eight two-story homes with a shared driveway leading to an interior motor court accessing the two-car garages. The architecture of the two-story homes is reflective of craftsmen's Spanish and Mediterranean design features. Elevation plans feature complementary earth-tone colors with stucco finishes, red concrete tile roofs, decorative gable accents, window shutters, and decorative metal grills. Lots range in size from 2,745 square feet to 3,028 square feet, and each home is provided with a private yard area. The structures have a maximum height of 26 feet 6 inches. All units would have two-car garages with side-by-side interior parking stalls. Plans indicate two variations of two-floor plans with each home having a total of 1,350 square feet, including three bedrooms, two and a half baths, which is consistent with the surrounding housing stock. The Walnut Street proposal includes seven entitlement actions with the disposition and development agreement overlapping both projects. The precise plan review was conditionally approved by DRC. It was determined that the layout, site design, and architectural elements of the project meet the development standards of the proposed specific plan and zoning code. As previously mentioned, the disposition and development agreement was approved by council in December 2020. On September 28th, the Planning Commission conditionally approved the Tentative Track Map, Conditional Use Permit, and Affordable Housing Agreement. The proposed track map would allow for eight lots to be sold as individual parcels that would each contain a single-family residence, which is consistent with the existing density allowed for properties of this size. The specific plan requires a conditional use permit for residential plan development in order to assure project compatibility with the surrounding area as well as compliance with the site and design standards such as site size, lot coverage, building height, and density at a discretionary level. A single-family home may be built without a conditional use permit in this specific plan. However, homes that are part of a residential plan development must have approval via a conditional use permit in order to assure compatibility with the surrounding area. The proposed design standards would help ensure that residential developments would be compatible with adjacent uses. The Affordable Housing Agreement ensures development of affordable units on the Walnut Street site in conjunction with development of the Fruit Street site and sets forth the terms of affordable units such as eligibility, income-level requirements, and establishes the 45-year term of affordability for the project. Income levels to qualify for one of these homes would range from $64,900 to $92,750, depending on the size of the household. The outreach for the affordable units will initially focus on sales to Laverne residents who would be considered preferred buyers and given preference for the purchase of one of these homes, to the extent legally permissible. The general plan currently designates this site as low-density residential. The applicant proposes a new general plan land use designation of specific plan residential. This change in designation is consistent with what is being proposed in the citywide general plan update. The specific plan residential land use designation refers to areas implemented with specific plans which only allow for residential development, associated community facilities, and open space. The maximum residential density would be identified in the specific plan. This amendment would also further the goals and policies of the city's housing element as well as help to satisfy the city's regional housing needs assessment obligations. The Walnut Street specific plan is being amended to allow development of properties currently designated for high-density projects such as apartment buildings to be developed as single, individual, for-sale residential units. The proposed amendments are consistent with the current specific plan, which provides regulations and development standards for diversity of housing types. The density of residential development remains the same and consistent with the existing densities contained in the current specific plan, which was the original intent. The proposed development is compatible with the surrounding residential land uses. The introduction of this project into this area would enhance the existing surroundings with new housing and an attractive streetscape. The city conducted a request for proposals process to secure an independent firm to evaluate environmental impacts in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. LSA Associates was selected. They completed an initial study for the project which identified that a mitigated negative declaration would be the appropriate environmental documentation for these proposals. The draft MND was released for public review and comment on July 26, 2021, with comments due by August 16, 2021. The MND identified seven topic areas. Biological resources, Fruit Street only. Cultural resources, both sites. Geology and soils, both sites. Hazards and hazardous materials, Fruit Street only. Noise, both sites. And tribal-cultural resources, both sites. There were no potentially significant impacts identified in any other topic areas, and the mitigation measures specified in the MND reduce all project impacts to a level of less than significant. The city of Laverne has historically used level of service to determine traffic impacts. However, roadway capacity and operation, including level of service, is no longer a consideration for determination of significance and mitigation under SEQUA guidelines. The city recently adopted vehicle miles traveled, or VMT, thresholds for land use project screening. This method can be used to screen out projects that are expected to generate low VMT from further transportation analysis. The LSA transportation study examined VMT thresholds and traffic operations in the vicinity of the Fruit Street project under a variety of scenarios, including existing and projected conditions. While the project does not create a transportation impact at any of the studied intersections, the transportation study does note that the project should pay a fair share of 10% for traffic signal improvements at Fruit Street, Amherst Street intersection. This was included as a condition of approval. The environmental consultant will further expand on the transportation study as it relates to SEQUA requirements later in this evening's presentation. Staff received a total of 31 comment emails and letters regarding the project, with 14 in opposition or noting concerns, and 14 in support. In addition, three letters had a total of 25 signatures that were submitted in support of the project. The majority of the opposition comments were not related to SEQUA impacts, but rather the current levels of service for surrounding streets for the Fruit Street project. A response to comments document was compiled by the environmental consultant, including an errata in response to a letter received from the Los Angeles County Sanitation Districts. The environmental consultant will discuss this in a few moments. Staff conducted two virtual workshops for the project, one on May 18th for Fruit Street development and one on May 25th for the Walnut Street development. On September 28th, the Planning Commission voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval of this project. In addition, they supported sending a letter from the Planning Commission chairman to the city council encouraging that funding and installation of a traffic signal be prioritized for the intersection of Fruit Street and Amherst Street, and that this project be added to the city's capital improvement plan so that a signal could be installed and operational once the project was completed. The Planning Commission also wanted to convey to city council to explore traffic calming measures for Amherst Street, a design study for the existing driveway for Lutheran High School on Amherst Street, and to investigate whether signs could be installed on Amherst Street indicating a no-truck route or weight-limit restriction signage. I would also like to mention that three emails were received today regarding the project, and the council should be in receipt of that correspondence. Staff, DRC, and Planning Commission recommend the city council approve the entitlement cases for Fruit and Walnut Street projects based on the staff report, conditions of approval, and mitigation measures. This concludes my presentation. I would like to introduce the environmental consultant, Dio Glentis. Once Dio has completed his presentation, staff, the project consultants, and applicant will be available for questions.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. My name is Dio Glentis. I represent LSA. We're the environmental consultant for the project, and we conducted the California Environmental Quality Act analysis for both the Fruit Street site and Walnut Street site. As Vanessa mentioned, there's two different sites. 50 units on Fruit Street, right up the street here, and eight affordable units on Walnut Street. Both of them include specific plan amendments, and we disseminated the environmental document for public review 20 days and received comments, incorporated some of that input, and here we are. Next slide. The initial study has some site-specific technical studies that were included in it as appendices, as well as biological resources, cultural resources, noise and vibration, air quality, and of course, transportation and vehicle miles traveled. The biological resources assessment included field surveys, arborist evaluation, particularly for the Fruit Street site as there were a couple of oak trees on the premises that warranted protection in accordance with the municipal code, and there was a mitigation measure to that effect. The archaeological analysis included historic architecture review of the single-family home on Fruit Street site circa 1903, evaluated by an architectural historian that meets the Secretary of Interior Standards for architectural history, and it was determined not eligible for preservation in accordance with SEQUA. The Walnut Street site has... It was previously developed and graded and demolished, so there wasn't really much to evaluate on that property, negative effects on that one. Noise and vibration. We did a construction analysis and operational analysis. In particular, the environmental document included mitigation measures for construction noise for both sites as the municipal code has an upper limit threshold for construction noise, and there are some measures that will be implemented during construction to ensure that the noise levels from the heavy equipment do not exceed the standards established in the municipal code. Can we skip to the next one, and I'll come back to transportation? Thank you. Air quality, greenhouse gas, and energy modeling. We evaluated the projects both for construction and operation. For pretty much every analytical topic, we evaluated both sites collectively as appropriate, and where they are far enough apart where the impacts would not accumulate, we analyzed them separately. For example, for noise, you know, they're far enough apart where there wouldn't be a cumulative effect from the both of them. But for air quality on a regional level, we made sure that we combined the emissions from both sites as one project to determine what type of... How close to the thresholds that the emissions would reach. Can we go back? Sorry. Go back to the transportation. So as Vanessa mentioned, SEQUA now no longer considers level of service as an impact to the environment from a project. It's all about vehicle miles traveled. And for both sites, there is a less than significant effect, particularly for the Fruit Street site. It screens out from the vehicle miles traveled impact because its proximity to a high-quality transit corridor, which is defined as, in this case, one where within a half-mile you have mass transit at 15-minute intervals during peak hour. And in addition to that, the project is not permitted to have more than more than the minimum amount of parking that's allowed per the municipal code. And I believe it's .5 per unit of guest parking. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's .5 per unit. So we have the minimum amount of parking, and we meet all the criteria in order to exempt the Fruit Street site from vehicle miles traveled impact. For the Walnut Street site, by virtue of the fact that it's affordable housing, that too screens the project out from the vehicle miles traveled impact. In addition to VMT, we evaluated level of service for the project. We conducted a scoping agreement with the city to determine which intersections would be subject to the analysis, including the Amherst and Fruit Street intersection. And we identified that, under existing conditions, the level of service on that intersection is already deficient, and we evaluated the project's contribution to that deficiency. And based on the criteria and the performance standards that are established in the city's transportation guidelines, there is no transportation effect that the project would have on that intersection based on the existing conditions and what we... intersection, based on the existing conditions and what we anticipate the project would contribute to it. Go ahead. One more, please. In addition to the technical studies I just discussed, the project applicant also conducted geotechnical investigations, Phase 1 and 2 environmental site assessments, infiltration testing, and hydrology studies essentially in accordance with LID, LID, the LID program in the city municipal code. As Vanessa stated, the CEQA document was circulated to the public from July 26th to August 16th. Several comments were received, both in favor and opposed to the project. Go ahead. Thank you. And it's important to note that the, the comments that pertain to transportation, which is the vast majority of the comments that we received, pertain to level of service, which is, I mean, it may be a, an issue with, on the municipal level, but from a CEQA standpoint, level of service is not a metric to, to evaluate environmental impacts at this point anymore. So from a CEQA perspective, the project does not have a, an environment, a transportation effect on the environment. So this was a CEQA process, and we are getting towards the end here, City Council hearing. We've had, sorry, we've had, this is the fourth opportunity for public comment, including the public workshops, which were, there were two, the circulation of the environmental document in the Planning Commission hearing. There were actually two Planning Commission hearings, you know, one virtually and one in person, and here we're at the City Council. We started this project early 2021, and through the process, we are, you know, here we are. My colleague, actually, my, our, LSA's Transportation Principal, Embraish McRae-Gee, is available via Zoom to elaborate on the technical components of the transportation study. Should there be any specific questions that I'm not able to answer, and he, you know, he's via Zoom, he's a, he prepared the environmental, the transportation study, and he's a project engineer, available for you guys. And that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do we have any questions for staff at this point? Thank you very much. I'll be calling you up after. We're going to go ahead to open the public hearing right now. Again, three-minute timeframe, if we could, please keep, try to keep it to that. If you do need additional time, please ask. Also masking, again, please keep your mask on when you're at the podium. I do have some speaker cards here, and we will start with Alex Hernandez. With Brandy Wine Holmes.
Mayor, members of City Council, it's a pleasure to be before you today, representing Brandy Wine Holmes. We're very excited about the opportunity to, we've been working on for over a year and a half with staff, exploring this possibility of bringing new housing, much new housing, new housing to the City of Laverne, and actually being able to propose two different price points, the affordable, which will be provided on the Walnut Street property, which will be all restricted and affordable, and then market rate, but a market rate that's desperately needed in the price zone, market rate, but entry level, with the townhome development on Fruit Street. We've been working closely with staff over the years, and I think our work was successful, and that the commission really had no focus at all on the project itself, architecture, design, colors. That was very thoroughly worked through with the staff, and I think that was a tribute to your staff, going through the thoroughness and making sure that was presented in the proper manner. Just for background, we did look at this project from traffic, from the very beginning, and we started off with 58 units proposed on Fruit Street. That was reduced down to 50 as a result of traffic and access issues. First one that came to be was the fire access. You saw on that site plan, there was a secondary exit. That was not on the initial site plan, but for fire purposes, it was emergency purposes, we incorporated that. There was also a decelerating lane that was required to be in, in front of the property, which actually reduced the size of the property. The combination of those two reduced eight units in total from the original plan. Then we were approached by the city engineer to look at modifying the median to help access, and we accepted those designs, worked with our engineer and the city's engineer to come up with those that you saw here before you today. And then last, as a result of comments and received from the existing impact on the neighborhood, there was a suggestion that we look at paying the proportional share of the traffic signal at the corner of Amherst and Fruit, and we gladly accepted that condition. So to point, a point at this point is that we have accepted all recommendations of staff and the city engineer, and we've also reviewed all the conditions of approval and accept those, and are eagerly looking for the opportunity to get going here and, and seek your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Mr. Gaveldon.
Evening.
Evening.
I didn't even write anything for this. I live on Amherst, and I think I've already made a public comment that the Kalusek family, they deserve their opportunity to sell their property and develop it. I've said it to the developers, and I think they did generally a good job, but I think that's wildly exaggerating to frame everything the way that was presented. It, it wasn't all slam dunk, it isn't all beautiful, and for that, I think the city is basically selling itself out for putting the, you know, 10 pounds potatoes in a five-pound bag, when for many years, they knew this has been an issue, and has done very little to mitigate those issues over the year, building up to what is now three projects. Two of them, the ones discussed tonight that have been conflated and watered down, I heard the words that there was two specific amendments for these projects over a mile apart from each other so they could pass the smell test on all the CEQA requirements, and if the standard for Laverne is now what CEQA allows you to do, that's no better than letting a criminal off the street because Gascon says it's okay. So for this City Council, if you really want Laverne to kind of like stay Laverne a little bit, maybe you should start considering the people that live here already, who have invested their time, their money, their talent, and have not sold out for the city by leaving for Texas or Florida or what have you. And for all the council members here, you live in this city, so I'd hope that you'd understand that we're not here trying to fight the people that, that are endeared to their, to their projects and have done their hard work, but the fact that now this is the third project in less than a year, the City Council has put before the, the community, it doesn't fit. The Amherst project doesn't fit, this project is making it worse. The intersection of Amherst and Fruit was an F before the Amherst project, now it's an F minus minus. So disregard all the facts you want, the reality is, is that you're selling out the community.
Thank you, Mr. Gaveldon. Kathy.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Kathy Kalusek, and my father Vern is the owner of the property on Fruit Street. I'd like to start out by thanking our city staff, the planning commissioners, and the City Council for all your time and attention to the details of this project. This shows the dedication and commitment to our community that you all share. My father has been working this land since 1948, after my grandparents bought it when it was in Orange Grove, and he has loved it, but 73 years after, later, after suffering a major heart attack, losing my mother, his wife of 60 years, to cancer, and breaking his hip, he's no longer able to do the work that's required to maintain the property, and it has become a burden to him. After all, he just turned 90 on the 10th of this month. This has been an incredibly long and stressful process for him and my family, which I began almost two years ago, and we've been in escrow with Brandy Wine for over a year now. Our timing couldn't have been worse for this project. With all the changes coming to our area all at once, people are feeling overwhelmed, and there's a recurring complaint that their voices aren't being heard. Based on this project, I really don't think that's accurate. Under normal circumstances, a traffic study wouldn't have been required for this project, but the city's traffic engineer requested one due to the residents' concerns. Originally, Brandy Wine had intended to build 58 units, as Alex had mentioned, but because the fire department required emergency exit, and the city's requiring a deceleration lane for northbound traffic, the number of units had to be reduced to 50, and my father had to reduce his sales price by $550,000. For southbound tra- traffic, the median will be reconfigured to add a turnpocket into the development, and a much-needed traffic sim- signal will be added at Amherst and Fruit. If the city officials weren't listening, there wouldn't be so many street improvements required with the project. The location is ideal for this type of development. Currently, the property is owned for commercial, and we all know if it was a commercial development, it's going to cause far more than this relatively small residential development will. And it's going to blend in nicely with the other commercial developments. There's apartments behind the small high school. It's an excellent location to walk to stores, restaurants, and other conveniences. I think this project will be a great asset to our city. As a Realtor, I know there's a lack of homes available in our city in a price range that the next generation of buyers can afford. I checked this afternoon, there's currently only 23 active listings in Laverne on the multiple listing. There's a small condo that's two-bedroom, one-bath for $399, or $339,000, a small old fixer-upper house for $550,000, then the price jumps to $699.9, then $779, and the other 19 listings are $839 and well above that. There's a need for homes in the $550 to $650 range, and this development will help us bridge that gap. On top of this, the state's requiring more housing, there's an article in the Tribune from September 29th that there is a new state task force that will be punishing cities that fail to approve housing. We will also reap the benefits of property taxes from 50 units, and more people to patronize our shops and restaurants for increased sales tax revenue to add to our city's budget, and help us staff and equip the fire and police departments. This project makes sense, and I hope the citizens of Laverne will embrace the project, and that we'll be able to move forward with this quickly, so my father can move on and enjoy the next chapter of his life. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Janine Johnson. Sure. Danita Bo Camp.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The project of the Walnut Housing is a prime example of the segregation that took place in Chicago, where real estate agents intentionally steered African-Americans and other people of color away from predominantly Caucasian neighborhoods. Even in the presentation, it lists the townhomes on Fruit Street as, quote, "preferred buyers", unquote. This blatant separation of moderately affordable homes on Wal- on Walnut Street is the new politically correct phrase for racism. Ms. Lau and Mr. Davis continuously preach inclusion, yet they are in favor of such project is hypocrisy at its finest. I guess it's not a form of racism when those in power implement the segregated housing. It was discussed that the median would be reconfigured on Fruit Street, but rather than reconfigure, just reconfigure the median, why not install a controlled light so that residents can safely enter and exit the housing project, rather than have residents turn right to go north on Fruit, and then turn right to go east on Amherst so that they can access Foothill Boulevard and go around the entire neighborhood so that they could travel south on Fruit Street? This would significantly lessen the traffic that would travel on our street, Amherst. I think that the city needs to have more housing, but they also need to consider the opinion of the residents who live in these immediate neighborhoods and are adversely affected by this traffic. Putting that signal there would then allow people to make that turn safely, because you've got the driveway that exits from the Kohl's Shopping Center, and people that are accessing McDonald's coming out of that driveway. That doesn't give those cars a lot of time. If there's no controlled light, that doesn't give them a lot of time to make that left turn. Cars are trying to make the light at Foothill because they don't want to wait for three cycles, and I don't know if you've seen, on Foothill Boulevard going east to go north on Fruit, the cars that back up to turn left now go into the lane on the Foothill Boulevard. Sometimes it takes three and four cycles to get to go north on Fruit Street. Without that controlled light, you're going to have cars backing up in that left turn lane, whether it be for the housing project and/or the Laver- the Lutheran High School, it's going to now back up into the Fruit Street lane, and now you're in essence only allowed one lane to travel on Fruit Street. So now you're going to have this backup even maybe possibly all the way to the signal at the freeway. So I think the city really needs to at least consider and maybe have some kind of study done for a controlled signal for the housing project itself. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kathy Newlin, Foothill Terrace, Laverne. And I have a, my concern is on the Fruit property, the three stories. Nobody is addressing the fact that we don't have the ladder truck, the use of the ladder truck right now. And I've talked to the fire department, I've asked them, you know, what about the sprinkler systems, what about the smoke alarms, but those are all just giving you a little bit of time when a fire starts. Those don't save you. And I even had one man online argue with me that firemen are trained and equipped to do three to five flights of stairs with the hoses. That's not the point. What if the fire is in the stairwell? You know, it, you can't just dismiss the fact that we need the firemen to rescue people. If you've fallen, if you've passed out, if you've fallen and hit your head, you're just going to get wet from the sprinkler system. You're going to hear the alarm, but that isn't going to save you. So I think that that's something that needs to be addressed with the three-story units. Thank you.
Thank you. Janine Johnson.
Hi. I feel like I'm doing a little deja vu with the previous, with the Amherst project, and I, I just, I feel like you have already decided what you're going to do. I had that feeling with, with the last project. It's like this is, this is just for show. May or may not be the case, but that's how it feels to me, and that's how it's felt to a lot of residents in the area. We spoke at the hearings, we spoke at the Zoom meetings, and even though you disregarded the Planning Commission, the fact that they didn't go along with that project on Amherst, yet you just went ahead and, and set up 42 homes on, on five acres, and so now here we are again with more traffic. This, the traffic is major. I asked 10 years ago, I came to City Hall 10 years ago, and asked them to do a signage for keeping trucks out of the area. Oh, we can't do that, that's not allowed. It's like, I know it's allowed, I see it in many cities. I don't think you, I don't know if you all walk around areas of town, because it's, it's really disheartening to see a beautiful area of town that beca- has become a real major thoroughfare, and it breaks my heart that our house was built in 1927, and it's not the same house anymore. I mean, it's, it's major traffic all day long, and it's just, it's going to get worse, oh my gosh, with these, what's going on right now between this project. I don't have a problem with the project itself, it's the traffic that it's going to create, and I just, I wish you would just not rely on CEQA. I wish you would get out there yourselves and look at something and, and see what's going on in town, because we're not happy, and, and it's just a shame, and I'm really disappointed in the city, actually.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this matter? Yes, sir. Could please state your name and your address, sir?
Thank you, Councilman. My name is Brian Flint, here in Laverne, off Canyon View Drive. I had no intention of coming up and speaking today, this is my first meeting here today, but hearing this is disheartening. I've lived in this city now for 12 years, lived in the general area here for most of my life. I see the picture up here, Laverne Rancho, it looks like, with the picture of the orchard. This is what I remember growing up in this area, orange groves everywhere, nurseries, things like that. As a homeowner here, it's getting harder and harder to find nurseries that we can go to. We're stuck with a handful of stores, but none of them in our city. They're gone. As an orchard owner, I've had to move up north to plant my own orchard and inform what I hope to have as a nursery later on. So hearing this story tonight about land being sold to developers gives me that sense of loss in our community, things that we're missing out on, things we no longer have, things our kids will never have. So hearing another, another developer planning a project that takes up acreage, takes away from the people, I would give... people, I would give my life right now to own an orchard in this area or a nursery in this area. It's a wonderful opportunity, and unfortunately, we're giving that up. It's no longer going to be available for my kids, for their kids. We're going to see concrete jungles, basically. Nobody's talked about the fact that we're losing all our greenery in the city as we develop these projects. Got a limited amount of trees, we're no longer producing things that we need for our green environment, things that create oxygen and benefit us in different ways. So it's a shame to hear this. This is the first I heard of it, I'm glad I'm here, glad I'm able to give you my opinion on it. I think you need to reconsider what we're doing, look at the picture again. This is what the idea of Laverne was for our ancestors that were here before us. They wouldn't recognize it. It's all buildings, development, things that are kind of shameful. I understand the idea of bringing money to the community, I get that, but there are things that we may not want to consider sacrificing. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else come up and speak? JR?
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me okay? Yes, good evening. My name is Carlos Rodriguez. I'm the executive officer with the Building Industry Association of Southern California, Baltimore chapter. The BIA is a nonprofit trade association of nearly twelve hundred companies employing over one hundred thousand people affiliated with building homes for all. On behalf of our membership, we would respectfully like to express our strong support of the Planning Commission and staff recommendation for the approval of the Brandywine Homes Housing Development Project presented this evening. The city of Laverne has been responsible for providing zoning to accommodate an increase from five hundred and sixty-two residential units during the fifth regional housing needs assessment cycle to an increased state housing allocation of approximately one thousand three hundred and forty-six units for the upcoming sixth RENA cycle. This reflects a similar increase across the entire Southern California SCAG region from the current RENA obligation of four hundred and twelve thousand to a new state obligation of one point three million new housing units as required by the RENA allocation. This demonstrates the dire housing shortage, as was alluded to earlier this evening with the amount of housing availability in the great city of Laverne. Clearly, every unit of housing is necessary to assist the city of Laverne and the entire SCAG region to address this dire housing shortage. The Brandywine Homes project is a step in the right direction in helping to alleviate the crisis. Furthermore, there are many added benefits for the city that result from the production of housing. This project will strengthen the local economy with new investment and generate revenue for the city of Laverne. This project will also accumulate taxes and fees contributing to deeply needed city operations and will create construction jobs during this difficult economic condition. Estimates show that for each unit of housing, at least two jobs are produced. Further, the infusion of work and future residents will help support local businesses. We want to express our gratitude for the considerable time and effort dedicated by you and your staff to review this outstanding project. BIA understands the complexities involved in making your decisions, such as considering the quality of the proposal to developers' property rights as well as the community needs, and we also know the considerable pressure that many cities are under from SCAG and, and the state to approve more units and ultimately make a supportable decision that is in the city's best interest. In closing, the Brandywine Homes is a well-planned, environmentally sensitive development. It also has no unmitigated environmental impact and offers a truly exceptional level of public benefits. The BIA Southern California supports the fulfillment of the city of Laverne's general plan and zoning regulations and strongly urges your support. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. I can't hear anybody.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for having me this evening. It is your turn to make a positive decision for our neighborhood. You can require mitigation, opening Bowden, signs for the weight restriction, and other signage when it comes through traffic. You can follow up on the analysis that was brought up in, in multiple emails to Planning Commission and also to Council, including the distance between any proposed signals on, on Fruit and the type of stacking and queuing issues that when you have that many signals in line with each other, what that causes. That is going to be a definite issue on Fruit. We have the races, we have the fare traffic, and there's going to be Carvana and all these other larger Amazon trucks now. The queuing and the stacking on Fruit is going to become noticeably apparent, and that must be considered. There are still issues concerning the traffic study on what was not included. The faulty number for the nursery again has been brought through, and I have gotten it clarified that the number that was used in Amherst and this project for the, for the old Amherst Nursery was actually a commercial number, and it should have been a wholesale number. And that difference goes from over a hundred down to six. And that makes the Amherst traffic numbers plummet in a very bad way. It pulls it down to an F minus, minus, minus. The other thing also is that the traffic study for this project, for the Fruit project, completely ignores and doesn't even bring up, it's not even on the map, the driveway at Lutheran High School, which is less than fifty feet from the intersection. That is the only driveway that buses can ingress and egress from that property, and that is because of the slope. When you have a long vehicle like that, they have to have a flatter length of distance in order to make entry into a driveway. That was never looked at. When buses turn into that school, even now, we have backup. None of this was looked at. The Planning Commission also pointed out that the fact that the traffic study only shows one right turn from this project just is not reasonable. The, the numbers that are being used are not, I don't even know what you call it anymore, not actual factual, those, they're just not realistic. There was zero discussion about any special events at the high school at all, and included in my email to you were pictures just from a few weeks ago with what the special, special events look like from that high school. The twenty-five signatures which were brought up that, that were in favor of the project, none, none of those people live here. They are from businesses, businesses around here, but none of them live here. We are asking for the traffic study to be readdressed. Our very specific issues must be looked at. The less than significant determination is based on, based on more, more impact on an already bad situation. That does not make it less than significant. And lastly, these two projects should have been pulled apart. When you've got projects which one doesn't have impact, that Walnut Projects is actually diluting the impact analysis in this EIR or this NEGDEC document, and mitigation must be addressed for the Amherst Street. And lastly, the signal's not going to be the hundred percent answer here for this. That signal's going to end up drawing more people through Amherst in order to cut around the Foothill and Fruit White intersection, which has, has already been brought out, has already, it's, we're getting more stacking there. There are two new families that live on Amherst. One of them's got two very little kids, and they live right at Amherst and Guava. We have another family now that lives just two houses down from that, that intersection who also have two little kids. This, our, our neighborhood is changing. The traffic impacts must be addressed. This city council cannot keep ignoring this. The scoping agreement, which was originally done for the traffic study, should have included an analysis of Guava and Amherst, and that was done by city staff. I, today, I do not understand why that scoping agreement did not include Guava and Amherst, why it did not include the driveway on Amherst, why it didn't include Oakleaf, why didn't it include Hartschorn. And I did go around again and walked to all the neighbors in that neighborhood, and as I said in my email to city council today, and these were all generally quotes, it doesn't make a difference what we do to city council, they've already made up their minds. Our voices aren't ever heard. The city council doesn't care about our neighborhood. I heard that from, well, there's now five empty houses in that neighborhood, in our local neighborhood, but many of the other people that I knocked onto, maybe a dozen, that's what I heard. It's very sad. That's very, very sad. I have more to bring up about the RENA numbers, but I'll do it in the general information part. I really hope you consider to pause and readdress or add the mitigation as requested. The traffic waits, they have signage about the traffic waits, which you can do, you don't have to do that with warrants.
Cynthia, if we could finish up, please.
Which was never closed with a warrant, it was never publicly publicized for comment, and.
Cynthia, if we could finish up.
And then also additional thoroughfare traffic signage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. Could you hear me? Do you hear me? My name is Lily Breno, Laverne resident and Lutheran High School mom. And this case, I think I already follow up a couple times from hearing and Plan Commission, and then I'm just thinking if our voice still, words still matter. Because I talked to my husband, I said, hey, I think this project is going to build like a fifty unit in the future. I think we'll make the decision tonight. So, but I still come on Zoom to think I have something to say because I want this on record. Because actually today, I was the, I went to Lutheran High School three times to pick up kids. It took me two minutes to get into the Fruit Street. It's so hard. It's, even just today, I don't know why it's so many traffic, I couldn't get in two minutes. And then I, because most time I cross the parking lot, I just go to Amherst. But this time, I just asked them, just want to cut in from the Fruit Street. It's too hard. We live there, my kids study there, it's coming three, four years, we'll be there. I talked to the principal of Lutheran High School, and then she goes, yes, yeah, this is a shame because we didn't get the first notice. I think maybe they would think about if they sell, they're going to buy. I said, no, it will be too expensive for you to buy, you know, because the commercial of cost pay more. So I feel like it's non-negotiable. So we already been, so many people are coming to like oppose. I don't think it's fourteen, it's much, much more than fourteen. I personally know at least fourteen person to oppose that. So I just thinking in the future, it could be something not fair for the new resident. Think about fifty family moving. They think they're moving Laverne, nicer town, just like advertising. Actually, they move in Pomona. It's different, it's totally changed the environment. So I'm just thinking, we try so hard, why we try so hard? Because I know a lot of Amherst residents, I think they pretty much give up. I wish I could come tonight to support, but I couldn't talk with the max, so I stayed on Zoom meeting because their vote doesn't matter. Because if in the future is the district voting, their vote really doesn't matter. They could only vote the spot. You guys maybe not care their vote, so that's why they give up. That's what I'm thinking. Because in the future, district voting, I just thinking it's so ridiculous if you go to like a rotate mayor and then hundred votes and we'll have the mayor to, you know, rotate. It's kind of ridiculous. So I try to be positive, you know. I, I know the person who, the owner have the right to get the maximum benefits, sell the best price, but the fifty unit is way too much. I used to be a graphic designer, I have a company do the interior design. If the white is just like the, like a garage, just the white is grass, three storage, no way to live in. So maybe in the future, my kids could only afford a house like that, okay, they could buy that, but compare, I'd rather build.
Lily, if we could finish up, please.
Yeah, thank you. I, that's what I want to say. Just appreciate if you guys still listening, but I hope our, our voice still matter. Thank you.
Okay, if there's anyone else via Zoom that would like to please raise their hand if they want to speak. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Matt Uboka, I live there in Pepperdine Court. We've been through the circus on the Amherst project, and now we're in the Brandywine. I'm not against the Brandywine project, but my biggest concern is the thoroughfare on Amherst. Currently, the two projects have not even started, and a lot of traffic is using that to connect Fruit to Williams to Gary. And the traffic light will do its thing, but it's not going to cut down the amount of traffic. So I was asking, I, I would like you to consider uploading Amherst Street by opening the Bowdon Street, which will move the traffic one block further to the north, and that will cut a lot of the traffic going to the Amherst and into the Lutheran High and Fruit Corridor. So really, what I'm saying is consider opening the Bowdon Street that connects to the Williams Street. That's it?
Okay, anybody else on Zoom? Please raise your hand. I do have one call that I'll need to make, Mayor. Oh, there we go.
Anybody else want to come up? It's a good time to do it right now before the call. Are you on? JR? Actually, you've, you've already come up once. Kathy?
Actually, this is a little bit different, something I wanted to add, just about traffic.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, you've already been up on the, on the subject. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Lowell.
My name is Jonathan Lowell. I'm a school teacher in the three LT Unified School District. My wife and I just recently moved to Laverne. We live on Amherst Street. My wife is a professor in the doctoral program of psychology at Cal Baptist University. We're just concerned with the developments on Fruit and also on Amherst, and believe that it should be the citizen's right to vote, to make that decision and not the city committee making that decision for the citizens of the city. We have two small children, an eight-month-old and a three-and-a-half-year-old, and just wanting to make sure they're safe. I've already noticed that cars are racing by pretty quickly, and we live right on the, at the stop sign on the corner of Amherst and Guava, so just. So just wanted to make sure my voic, our voices are heard in regards to that. That's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And then she's put her hand up and taken it down like three times. Should I just bring her in and see? Yeah. She's stood again. It's hard to keep track of her. There we go. Go ahead, Ms. Stevens.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Am I being, am I heard?
Go ahead.
Okay. Sue Gares, I'm a thirty-eight-year resident on Pepperdine Court, and I'm echoing many comments that have been placed this evening. It basically, it boils down to cumulative traffic issues. The, as Mr. Uboka said, the Bowdoin barrier on Williams is one mitigative factor that could be placed to open another artery to relieve the burden on Amherst. The, the traffic now is heavy, and so with two projects together, the cumulative effectiveness, regardless of all your studies and numbers and what you're saying, the reality is, the traffic is burdensome. It, it is not fair to residents that live here, it is not safe. It's a safety factor, and I implore you to look at that. The Bowdoin barrier is one simple fix, not that it will ameliorate everything. It's, it's something. I think the light needs to be looked at, at Fruit and Amherst, on what exactly that will do, negative or proactive? I, I, and I'm, I'm gonna say what others have said. I, I used to be a really proud member of this community and uphold its governance, and I have real questions. I, I don't think you're listening, I don't think you're being real and honest to the residents that have put time into this community. So, thank you, and I hope your ears are open. Good evening, City Council, and Mr. Mayor, thank you for this time. Engineers are really good at numbers, and they're really good at laying out what things should be. What engineers are not good about is human behavior. My son went to Lutheran High for four years, and that was ten years ago, and that was challenging at that point. Now things are even busier now, and with this additional, this additional living space and more families, and affordable families, which means lots of little kids. I beg you to look at the traffic situation. Lutheran High School has a lot of new drivers. Okay, that's something that needs to be considered, too. Benita High has a lot of drivers that are going up and down White Street and on Fruit Street. So please, don't overlook such an important, critical element of our community, which is travel time, people, and people's behavior. Thank you.
I'm sorry, who was that last speaker?
Patricia Suesman.
Anyone that hasn't spoken, wish to speak again at the dais, or at the mic? Being none, we're gonna close the public hearing and bring it back up to the dais. Counsel, comments, question, anyone want to start? We're done. Mr. Crosby?
It's been said a, a couple times tonight about this proposal of a traffic signal on Amherst and Fruit, of having a partial payment of Brandywine and a partial payment from the city. Can you explore that a little bit more for us?
We can expand on it. Cody, if you'd like to come up and give some information on that? Thank you. Cody, give it a tap and just make sure it's working.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Yes, to, to answer your question, so looking at the counts in the traffic study, and as I think is big to acknowledge in the, the statements this evening, is there are some capacity challenges at this intersection. With this new project coming in, adding additional trips, the level of service at this intersection is not entirely diminished as by caused by this project. However, there is a calculation within the traffic study that identifies that roughly ten percent of the impacts further causing, you know, level of service challenges at this intersection are, are proposed or anticipated, excuse me, because by the project, and thus that is the calculation looking forward towards ten percent of the cause, is it equal to ten percent of the cost?
And there's been brought up a couple from residents as well. Well, sometimes putting up a traffic light doesn't mean stop, means go faster between yellows. That might cause some other issues as well. I know we've had Dan come up, Mr. Kezey come up in past and, and talk about the positives and negatives of having a traffic light. So what would be the positives and negatives of that traffic light as well?
So if I first may just highlight that this traffic study shows that the warrant is met, is met for a traffic signal. When you're looking at a decision tree type approach to deciding whether a traffic signal is justified, step one is making sure you have the warrants met. There's a total of nine warrants, you all, you only need one to, to trigger it. If you don't meet any, then there's no justification for the warrant. So this study merely shows that it does meet the warrants, and if I'm not mistaken, I believe it is an opening year with the project. As far as downsides to traffic signals, Fruit Street is, is a heavy arterial north-southbound, a, a main connection point to the city, to the two-ten freeway baseline, Foothill, so on. Traffic being the heaviest in that direction, we would want to not cause further delay. Further delay in that direction impacts more people. So adding traffic signals could cause delay to the north and southbound folks. However, one of the things that could be addressed with the traffic signal is coordination, so tying the operations of that traffic signal to, say, Bowdoin. Moving in to north towards the Caltrans ramps or south to Foothill, where, where also Caltrans maintains that traffic signal, may be a bit of a challenge, not an impossibility, but tying these signals to operate together as a, as a system, almost as one, can, can help mitigate some of those challenges. It, it, it will, and I think the traffic study shows that the level of service today and with the project without the traffic signal is a level F. And if I'm not mistaken, speaking from memory, I believe it bumps it up to a level A, level of service A or B, depending on how that goes. So just to, to give a quantitative analysis to, to impacts from this particular signal.
And one last on the traffic light. It was brought by another resident, instead of having a traffic light at Amherst and Fruit, having it down at this, at the project, and/or so Kohl's or, or the shopping center, that would be kind of tied together. What, did you guys look at that at all?
So going back to the warrant analysis point, we did look at the warrant analysis for Amherst and Fruit. It did meet. We did not necessarily look specifically do a warrant analysis at the intersections, but it's, it's a pretty simple analysis. You have basically an ascending chart, as you have more traffic on the main, you need less traffic on the minor, and looking for gaps and clearances so that the vehicles can interact and, and hopefully not have conflicts, right? The, I, I believe the threshold, if I'm not mistaken, is a hundred vehicles in the peak hour on the approaching leg. That would be a hundred vehicles within one hour, typically in the morning, or the afternoon, whichever is greater, but those are the two, you know, AM, PM, peak rush hours. None of those intersections, which counts were taken and were analyzed, came close to triggering the warrant. So what the future may bring, I can't say, but today at least, it, it would not meet that first criteria in the decision tree.
Customer, what did you want to?
No, I just wanted to check and see if count, while we have Cody up here, rather than to get him up, any other questions relative to traffic that any of the other council has at this point?
Good. Clarification. At the beginning, you indicated the counts were based, and I forget how you phrased it, but related to construction. Are you talking about construction traffic or post-construction traffic?
The counts were taken in April of 2021, and that is the existing volumes out there. So it's a snapshot of what it looks like during those counts that are taken. From there, the project is analyzed based on the number of units, the type of units, the density, so on, using the ITE Trip Generation Manual. And then that's extrapolated to a forward-looking analysis. So we take the information we have today, we add the statistical information that we have for what this project anticipated to bring, and then we also apply escalation factors, as, you know, with time, there's also growth in the community. So this level, excuse me, this traffic study looks out towards 2040, I believe.
Okay.
Using an escalation factor through those years to reach those. So it's, it's, that's how those numbers are developed.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And, and building on that, you had, and you had made a comment that it meets the threshold sooner than the 2040 timeframe. When does it meet that threshold?
So if I'm not mistaken, the traffic study shows that the warrant analysis for this signal at Fruit and Amherst being discussed is 2023, opening year with the project.
Great, thank you.
Your mic is still on, sir. No. No. He's the mic monitor now.
We're all just trying to help each other.
Do you have any other quest, more questions for Cody? Thank you very much. Counsel? Any other questions? Comments? Concerns? There's been a lot of mention tonight about us, you know, not caring and things like that. Well, we all live here in this town. We do pay attention to this stuff, and we watch, we listen. The, the traffic signal, we received a letter from the planning commission. Yes, they, we voted to for the Amherst project, they did bring up the information to us that they would like us to review the traffic signal, but also traffic calming measures or something to do with, with the situation. Right now, we, we're just approving projects, nothing's been built yet. I, I would like to see that we look at CIP and express CIP to put the traffic signal in the CIP for the upcoming, can we do that?
Yes, we can. We typically start that process in advance of the budget process, and so we're looking at five-year cycles or looking at the fifth year. We can certainly incorporate that into it. If we get dedicated grant funding, whatever the case, we can certainly advance it, but we can add it to the list.
Yeah, I think that we, we would like to see that. I would like to personally see it accelerated if at all possible, if we get funds. Customer, what?
I would be in support of that. I think my additional comment would be to Cody's point about the pros and the cons of a street light or other measures. I would like to have evaluated as we look at the CIP over the course of time to determine what truly is the best avenue to take.
Well, and, and let's not forget, in, in discussing the Amherst project, we at that time stated, and I'll reiterate, that we want to have a traffic study of that entire area upon completion of the Amherst study. I don't know whether we want to wait for the Brandywine project to be in place to have that study done. I mean, I think as an ongoing effort, we're gonna need to be doing more traffic studies more frequently just to see what the impact of not only planned projects like this, but ADUs that are being built, divisions of properties that are being done, that are in some cases beyond even our influence. You know, the, the state of California is really looking at saying, in order to take care of the homeless problem, we got to put people in houses. Well, we don't have enough houses to begin with, so we need to start building houses. So, so it, you know, I, I went off to school in seventy-nine when Laverne was two-thirds Orange Grove, one-third houses, and when I came back in four years, it was exactly the opposite, two-thirds houses, one-third Orange Grove. So I understand the changes that Laverne's had to make. My grandfather had, was not forced, but was strongly encouraged to sell his citrus farms after World War II, so that when people were returning to the United States, they would have a place to live here in Laverne. Not everybody in the United States clearly, but some. So I, I think we need to be measured about this, and I get it. You know, people still don't want a lot of stuff to happen in their neighborhood. My neighborhood's gonna change dramatically with the transportation-oriented development going on in First Street. It's a block and a half away from my home, and, and so that's gonna have a huge influence on our area. So I get it, I share that concern, but I want to make sure we do this in a planned and, and sensible manner going forward and addressing the traffic concerns as we see them. I don't think it's, it's, the, the traffic burden should be placed in front of this development, but I think we need to respond to the development by making sure we're keeping track of, of our developing traffic patterns.
I think also that, as Mayor Protem Davis stated, comprehensive traffic study would be in order as we get closer to completion, because the safety of our residents is a big concern, also the traffic flow. We're all in the same situation, we all travel through this town, and it's very important that we monitor what's going on, if we need to do any mitigation, that we need to do it as we, the project comes on. Yes, Mr. Rusty?
Just so we're clear, these are not conditions of this project, but things that you would like us to add to our radar, I'll call it.
Yes.
Okay, and what I would suggest is, if we really want it to reflect what's occurring, we should wait until the projects are completed, not when they are being constructed, so we understand what the effects are actually on the street at the time.
As the planning commission gave us some ideas, and I think it's, it's important, they're very good ideas, it affects the neighborhood, it affects transportation, it affects the safety of our children, and it's all very, very important, but yes, and I think that's, the, the traffic signal is for us putting our CIP and expressing and getting that on a fast track, and then as the project completes, we do a comprehensive study, and then we review it again, we review Bowdoin, we review all these issues that we're talking about. Also, Kathy Newland had brought up the, about the fire truck and the three-story buildings. These are all one-hundred percent fire sprinkles, is that not correct? And I know that we have, we do have aid from Los Angeles County right now. Our fire, obviously, our, our quint can't be used right now, but our new fire chief's working on that right now as we speak, so hopefully these, these, these things will solve themselves very shortly. We're two years away or so from these projects anyway, but the point is, is that... We're two years away or so from these projects anyway, but the point is, is that our city hired a new fire chief. He's working on this very diligently, going to come back to the city manager and the council with some ideas and apparently in the very near future. So we're, we're looking very forward to that. As tonight, as we brought four, four new firefighters on, not new actually, but we badged and pinned some new firefighters. So we're moving in that direction. So safety, safety, safety.
Bringing the Quint back in service is very much a priority of the new fire chief.
Yes. Mr. Crosby, any other comments or?
Something I heard loud and clear tonight was from residents, and it follows up with both, all of your comments earlier. Wasn't against the Brandywine building and construction, it's making sure that there's traffic in the area. I do believe that cars turning right off of, out of the Brandywine are also going to be making a left on Bowdoin to come down if they want to go west on, on.
Foothill.
Foothill. If they want to go east, then, then you can see where a car might turn right onto Amherst to get to Gary. It's all about the lights at the very, the far ends, too. And, but I know that has not been brought up tonight as well, but I know probably a lot of cars would be going probably left at that light. Adding lights causes other issues as well. Mr. Kezey kept telling us every time he came up, the short time that we, I had him by sitting up here. So we have to look at what are those pluses and minuses as well. But if, if a light is going to be in the warrant right when this, 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 this project is opening, we need to, to look at that sooner than later on that as well.
Councilor Laugn?
I would just, you know, look at this project in its totality, and I think we want to be responsive to obviously the safety concerns of the residents who live in that area. But I also think that there is the greater concern that has been alluded to, that the state has imposed certain requirements of every city with regard to housing. And so we have to balance those needs with the needs of the residents who live in the area with what needs to be accomplished by this city. So we're trying to do this as balanced as possible, so we do appreciate your comments and your sharing your information, and we'll continue to try to do the best that we can to address those concerns as they arise.
Mayor Protem Davis?
I think I mostly expressed myself earlier, but I'll just say that, that your voices are not falling on deaf ears. This is one of those situations where we're not going to be able to make everybody happy. We do live in a democracy, but we also believe in capitalism and that people who own things have the right to sell those things, and we can't get in the way of that fiduciary relationship. So, you know, it, it, it is a, a solution that I think is a good one, and I'll support it. It's, it may not be the best one out there. I don't know what the best one out there is because it wasn't brought before us, so that's all I have.
As all of my colleagues have stated, SB nine, SB 10 has come down the chute. It's been approved. And with lot splits, and as Mayor Protem Davis had stated with the ADUs, these, these, developments we're doing are well within our scope and well within what our other communities in our community have done. I know that Councilor Laugn lives in a community that's very similar. It's not attached homes, but it's got the center court where you have a walk-through space. So, and, and believe me, we do listen, as all my colleagues have said. I understand Guava, I understand the, the driveway to Lutheran High School, understand Williams, all the other Pepperdine Court. I, I get it, I understand. We haven't built this yet. As soon as it comes time, you know, whether we're on council or not, they're going to address this for the safety of our residents. We do listen. People say we don't, but we actually do. We read a lot. I want to thank staff. They did a fantastic job on this. I know there's been rebuttal on what the traffic studies and the EMTs and everything else, but these studies have been done by professionals. Our staff has done a lot of work on this, and I applaud you guys for that. This is a very nice project. I think once it gets set and once it gets built, just like the Amherst project, there's going to be people that are going to add to our community, families that are going to add to our community. It's very important. Laverne's going to grow. I think we're growing responsibly, and, and I think this is a very, very good thing for our city. I think that as we grow, the same as the L-line, gold line coming in, we're going to have to increase our services at that, the costs increase. So along with that, our city grows, we'll have to grow with the, our residents and what we pay in taxes for all these wonderful services in this great city that we live in. So I do think all, we all read every single thing our residents give us, and I also am in support of this project. And any other comments or concerns or for staff with that? I'd like the motion.
So as I've been instructed, we have to take this in two parts.
Yes, we do.
So the first motion needs to be done singularly and separately, and so I move that we approve the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for these projects as recommended by staff, the Development Review Committee, and Planning Commission as follows. Resolution number 2183, a resolution of the city approving the mitigated NevDEC and mitigation monitoring report program for the Brandywine project located at 3717 Fruit Street for the development of 50 interlocking townhomes and 1874, 1876, and 1878 Walnut Street for eight single-family homes.
Do you have a second?
I'll second. It's easier to say I move.
Vote, please. Second item. Need a motion for the second item? How would you like us to read that, Mr. Attorney? Mr. Cross?
I can read it. I'll move that we'll approve the general.
Wait, I think you had something.
You read too much. I'm cutting you back.
Okay.
He's cutting you off.
So motion would be to approve resolutions 2184, 2185, is that 85?
Yes.
Yeah, 85.
And ordinance, and introduce ordinance 1103 and 1104.
Take away, Mr. Crosby.
I move that. I move what he said.
I'll second that.
Vote, please. Vote.
And I will read ordinance 1103 and 1104 approving the amendment to the Foothill Boulevard specific plan and Walnut Street specific plan respectively.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you again, staff. Item number seven, we move to public comments, oral communications. Anybody wish to? Yes. Ms. Newlin. Thank you.
Kathy Newlin, Foothill Terrace, Laverne. My question is to the attorney. Two meetings ago, four weeks ago, I asked you to get an answer from our insurance company if they would or would not cover a lawsuit on the districting.
Oh. Ms. Newlin, you can address me, and then we can have one we're done, we'll have counsel.
Okay. And, and if that answer is no, then you're on record as saying you did talk to them, and it was no.
Thank you.
Well, do now. Yes, I did follow up. And the memorandum of coverage, which is basically an insurance policy that the city has with the joint powers, Insurance Authority, last year, they specifically amended the memorandum of coverage to exclude any decision made by a city council with respect to at-large elections or district elections. So yes, the contact was made. I personally reviewed the memorandum of coverage. They will not pay for it.
Mr. Gabeldon?
I know, it's me again. I just want to real quickly step back to the decision you made, and if, in the spirit of actually following through on the things that you said and listening, I noticed that nobody has mentioned anything about the Commons regarding the Bowdoin closure that had no reasoning beyond its original intent, and for 40 years, it's protected a street and privileged a street above Amherst. So I consider, I'd ask you to reconsider that in your analysis of making one situation worse for another. Is this path to a light at Amherst better than the other?
Mr. Gabeldon? I actually did mention that.
No, you didn't mention the Bowdoin.
I did.
You mentioned that this evening?
Yes, I did. I said, um, reviewing Bowdoin also when this track gets open to review Bowdoin and all the traffic mitigation.
Okay. Well, we could do that, we could do that now because the Amherst project actually started this conversation. Really, nothing has been done since then until we complained about the Bowdoin project. But anyway, first of all, you know, I'd really like to express my, my, you know, sadness for what happened last night at the Commons. I realize that, you know, there's a lot of things out of control, but, you know, the, the state of the, the union, so to speak, is people are walking around our street, and we can't do a lot about it, but when merchants in our city are being, you know, vandalized by inscrupulous individuals, I hope that we all look out for each other and for our businesses in particular that are really, you know, they're having a tough time right now. A lot of, a lot of stores are closing, and I, I hope that we all kind of like, you know, look out for each other in the city. To the council, and I've, I've written on more than one occasion now, and recently, was this morning, to find out that just before I showed up for the meeting this evening, apparently the website for the district voting has been somewhat updated to allow for the tool to be used, but noting that the data is basically garbage. So as the saying goes, garbage in, garbage out, I stress to you that it's been over 90 days since this resolution was presented at the city and has been yet to be resolved. And all the reasoning aside, you know, you're basically rushing this thing down the, the tracks here, and the fact that the city spent a lot of money on the Measure LV, you know, and haven't spent a dime on this really, other than a little bit of social media and some labor within the city staff, I think the city deserves better. Also, I'm not sure if I hit send on my email, but I will, regarding the Measure LV Oversight Committee. So it's interesting, I decided to, to listen in this last time, and in light of the, the recent request to support a forensic audit of the city business, the Measure LV was sold under the pretense of sacrifice the taxpayer as a solution to shortfalls in funding public safety services. As written, "To maintain funding for general city services in Laverne, including 911 emergency response, fire protection, paramedics, police patrols, gang, drug, and crime prevention, street maintenance, pothole repair, and moving graffiti shall, shall an ordinance establishing a 75.75% local tax increase until ended by the voters adopted, blah, blah, blah." So in the spirit of that, you'll find in my notes, my detailed notes of the last couple of meetings, that those meetings and the, the data that's provided to that committee do little to lay the foundation for reliable and transparent analysis. When the data with the reports is presented, do not match those that are published in the packets. Allocation ratios are questioned. Mr. Russi, you can look at the meetings last week. Go look at the video, everybody. It's on the, the YouTube if you want to go check it out or the city site. And then even the committee members find themselves confused, short on details, left to wait four months between meetings. So I, I really don't think that the spirit of, of what the, the taxpayers elected to participate in is really being lived up to, just based on the process, the fact that there was a year between meetings from last June to this June, and now the next one's in October. And then when, the most interesting thing, after I decided to rebuild that spreadsheet that was only available in video, just because the math wasn't adding up in my head, even rounding errors in some cases, which is not a big deal, but that there is a shortfall on Measure LV starting in year six that does not cover the planned expenditures for the city. And then if you, you take the numbers and you take it to year 10 and then to year 15, we're down $37 million. My math's not wrong, I can provide the data. I think, you know, if the city council is really serious about that oversight committee, then I think you'll make sure that the data that's being requested of that committee is provided more transparently and more reliably and maybe more frequently. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gabeldon. Janine Johnson? Thank you. Do we have anyone online?
Thank you again, everybody. A few things. One, who's actually fighting for us here at the city? Hiding behind SB nine, SB 10, and the RENA numbers is getting more and more ridiculous. You guys, you should all know, because you should be doing your research all the time, that there's going to be, there's already pushback on SB nine and SB 10. There's already multiple cities throughout California who have filed lawsuits against it, and their cases are not being dropped. On top of that, with the RENA numbers, even the San Gabriel Valley COG has written a letter against the RENA numbers because there's a bust in the math. And if you guys would look at that, you would see that the city of Laverne has already met its numbers. And it's just, it's this constant fear tactic of saying that the city's going to get in trouble over and over and over again without everybody doing the research that needs to be done has got to stop because it's hurting the residents. And yes, I'm very upset about this decision. There is no reason why you have to wait on any type of mitigation concerning the Creek Street. You guys could pull the trigger now as soon as possible because you have somewhat thorough data right now to actually start a traffic study and start working on it now. There is no reason why you have to wait until after the project. The, the city, the Amherst has already had an F. It's already there. You don't need any more data. What you need to do is have a meeting, sit with the residents, and talk about the things that have to get done in order to help us because we're still being ignored, no matter what you guys think. And it is not your decision to look at how you see our neighborhood. We are the ones that live there. And over and over again, it happened on Amherst, and I hear it from the same people over and over again, this isn't about you. This is about us and what we live through every day. It's about the two new families. It's about the, the half a dozen or more senior citizens that live in our street, one of them whom can't even back out of her driveway because she lives right at Guava. And she can't be on these Zoom meetings. She can't come to the meetings there in person because she's fairly disabled. So we're trying to speak for her, too. But you continuously ignore this. This is the third big project to hit our neighborhood, the third. No more waiting. Somebody needs to do something. You need to have a meeting with us. Again, going back to the RENA numbers, too, though, you need to do the research. We need to see it on the agenda of looking at what the, what the lawsuits against SB nine and SB 10 are doing and what's going on with this whole RENA analysis and the issues that counties are pushing back, cities are pushing back, there's entire COG groups that are pushing back. No more hiding behind that. And thank goodness that elections are coming, right? Because it's time to clean the house. Thank you.
Anybody else via Zoom, please raise your hand? Okay.
Anybody else wish to get up and speak on public comment? Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
So I had just come up with, you know, a few, I was researching some of the traffic calming things possibly that could be used, but, you know, I'd looked up, like, they have rubber speed humps, and they're fairly inexpensive, and they're very visible, and if you put them in a neighborhood, and then people decide they don't like them, they could be taken out. But it seems like that would help to deter people from going through Amherst. And then also, I've seen, I saw one of these like in Covina where they have a flashing stop sign because they were talking about that people are ignoring the stop signs. The other things I thought about is if we could get a traffic officer in that area to start cherry picking and, you know, then you have people that go, you know, I'm going to avoid that area because I don't like any of these things. So that's just my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak, public comment? Mr. Russi, did you want to speak on the? Oh, I'm going to close public comment, and we're going to come up to the dais.
Yeah, I guess the only one. Yeah, I guess the only one that I would provide some clarification on is the districting and the comments regarding the website. I know that that has been a frustrating aspect as far as getting the information out. I know it's the, the data being uploaded so people can manipulate the districts. And I know it's frustration, council has shared. Fortunately, the, unfortunately, the company that is reviewing, not our contractor, there's another firm that is reviewing the data before it's put up from the state, has been delayed. That we have put up the information that we have at this point. We are, we've been told that by tomorrow, Wednesday at the latest, the final version of that data will be up, but there is not much change to what has been populated as of today. So residents can actually go on there and manipulate the maps, and start to look at that with an understanding, and the, the critical part will be the final population number, so that they can make up their districts to the target number, which are in the 6,000 range per district. So, we are working on that. In the meantime, there are also printed maps that you can go on and still work within the population numbers that are there, but the demographic data is what will be completely accurate by Wednesday of this week. So, apologize for that, we are doing our best to move it forward as quickly as we can. And the statement that the city has not spent any money on this is not an accurate statement. We have contracted with NDC for a total of roughly $40,000, I want to say, plus an additional amount to do the outreach as well.
Thank you. Counsel, who would like to start? Counsel comments. Mr. Crosby?
I'm very proud of the input that, in this process, I know it's been going on for, for quite a bit of time, and all the way through when we're in COVID and virtual, trying to get outreach, and really appreciate the city doing that. One thing, suggestion I would, I want, though, is when we are having people online, if we can see on the side, you could hit the button, what I used to do on my own computer, see who's in the room. If we could have that posted up there, so the audience here can see who's in the room and who raises their hand, just like we would be able to see if they were sitting here as well. So, if we can, just to be able to see who's, who's there. Because I was trying to look at that number, it's hard for mine to see. I saw 16 and maybe 18, the number there of, of participants that were sitting there too, so, if we could do that. This past weekend, I got to go and be honored for, and celebrate the life of a, of a sweet Laverneite, one of my neighbors. She was 97, she was born November 12, 1924, and passed away September 17, 2021. Her name's Barbara Whitecamp, and just wanted to publicly celebrate her here. She was one of the first people to really encourage me to go into public service, and just to model in what she did too, so, thank you, and appreciate that.
Counsel Morello?
I just wanted to report out, since the last time I think we were here, the Culture Awareness and Social Inclusion Committee did have a meeting, and Yvonne was there to be able to share the designation of the Hispanic Heritage Month, that, the proclamation that was entered into at the last meeting. So that was a nice share out. I think the other nice thing for folks, if you're interested in getting to know more about what's going on, they're doing hot topics at each of these meetings, and the last hot topic was about districting to share out additional information. So in conjunction with what the city has put up on its website, the committee has also provided some resources, and I believe that recording is up on the website, Mr. Russi?
Sorry, I missed that last part.
The recording to Cassie?
Yeah.
Is on the website? It is, okay. So, the hot topics will change from meeting to meeting, but for those of you that are interested, I urge you to participate. I also want to say thank you to the staff, the police, the fire, all the folks who helped put on an amazing trunk or treat the first weekend of October. It was very well attended, there were tons of folks there, and I think it was a nice outing for people to get out to. It was really nice to see all the amazing costumes, because I definitely remember mine, and I was of an age where it was the plastic masks with the holes that didn't match where your eyes were, and all that other kind of good stuff. But the kids are definitely much more creative these days. I know that the mayor will probably touch on Taste of LV, so I will not belabor the point. But I will also just remind everyone that it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I share this, that, you know, please get checked, please encourage your family members to get checked. You know, it was a couple of years ago that my best friend's sister passed away due to just not, you know, I think sometimes we get busy, and we don't go to the doctor when we should, and we don't, you know, do the, the things that we should to take care of ourselves, so strongly urge you to do that, and take care of yourselves. That's all.
Mayor Protam Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, I too, shared with the Cassie discussion on districting, and it was a lively discussion. I think it was well had. I also enjoyed the Trick or Trunk event last Saturday. It was wild to see Halloween come so early, but it was, it was nice to see all the families out, that were out there. The Laverne Historical Society had a meeting this last Monday night that I was blessed to be able to attend. It was amazing. So to give you a little context, the elementary schools in Laverne for third graders have been doing a hands-on history, actually going back at least into the mid 80s. And they used to get on buses and go around and see different parts of it. And one stop was the oldest home in Laverne, which is on First and G. And then they used to walk up to my brothers and my manufacturing company and visit what industry looked like, at least one type of industry in Laverne. So we got to, we got to meet all the third graders, and that was great. And what Laverne Historical Society has done is built on that, and they've created, or they're in the act of creating, we got to see the opening trailer. They're creating six different videos that they're going to be able to use with all the kids regarding living in Laverne, education, churches, businesses, some history, and transportation. And, and the, the trailer that I saw was absolutely wonderful. Needless to say that my street was out of power at the time because the winds were ferocious that Monday night, if you remember. But I was at the Veterans Hall, they had power, and we got to see these wonderful vignettes that will turn into longer segments. And, and I think that what Laverne Historical Society has helped us do from a hands-on history perspective is marvelous. And, you know, districting is important. As, as, I have also been one of those that was chafing at the bit to get the information up there. Once I learned that the only difference in the demography that, that is taking place right now is the laggard piece is, they're trying to change the demographics to where someone's incarcerated as being their domicile, to saying, where did that person come from, as being their domicile versus the prison itself. I feel as though that isn't garbage for us to look at that data now. I don't believe that we have a significant, statistically significant number of incarcerated residents from Laverne, so I think the data is useful. Is it final? No, but the, I, I think it's important for people to, to use the tools that are available now and see what's going to happen, creating districts of 6,000 or 7,500, be that as it may. You know, look at what, what, what that looks like, because I think that's an important part of the process. And I won't step on the Taste of Laverne either.
You have a go back.
I do, I'm sorry.
Wait, you'd already presented.
No, no, last week, I went to the JPIA conference, and really brought back information on cybersecurity for our city. Also brought, spoke with the, the information that Mr. Cress also presented tonight too through our JPA about districting, and as well. It was a, a, a good conference about working with our local cities and our colleagues across California, and how to make sure that we are being properly insured, and what can we do to make sure that we are having our safeguards for the city too. So, yes, thank you, forgot to add that part.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Yes, the districting has been, I'd say, I'd be lying if I didn't say it was frustrating. I'll leave it at that. I know that we're working on it, and I know it's not, the city's hired people to do it. Unfortunately, the people they hired, have people they hired that fell off because of COVID and all sorts of other issues, so. COVID's affecting everything we do in our world right now, and it's, I'd like to see it over with, but unfortunately, we've got some time to go. But on that note too, tomorrow, or Wednesday night, the 20th, Taste of Laverne, 5:30 PM, you can check in. Tickets are still $45 until midnight tonight, and they go to $60 tomorrow. So please, please, let's support this. And kind of a trailer onto that, a lot of our restaurants, some of them are actually only still doing takeout because of the fact they're having such an employee issue. There's a number of them, I know Pollo Loco, I know Taste of Asia, and some of the other ones that have been in, the tables are just taped together, and you just go get your food. So please, continue to support our restaurants and our businesses. They are being faced with some of the most challenging situations with employees. And I don't know when this is going to come to an end, but it can't be too soon, but I think we're in here for a while to, to do this, so please support our local businesses. It is so important. They've come through this pandemic with our support, and we've done a very good job. We just need to continue to do that. Also, Heritage Park, the pumpkin patch, I don't know if anybody went by there, but there's no parking, because food trucks, booths, the Heritage Foundation, you know, our town does a great job, just like trunk or treat. I wasn't able to attend, but it was fantastic. An unbelievable job by all of our staff, and supported, it's up until, I think it's up until Halloween. So it's Saturday, Sunday, and what time is it, nine, nine o'clock? I think it's nine o'clock to one or two?
I do not recall.
Anyway, just look online, it's on the city website, but anyway, it's fantastic. Families, everyone, every walk of life was going through there. I think people are just really excited to get out and enjoy our town, and some of the things that we offer. Also, there was one other thing, I did also the Historical Society last Monday, I wasn't able to stay for the video, but you're doing a really, really, really good job. Also, you want to make sure that we just got the video regarding the truck that you're going to restore that's over at the high school. So I think you guys will be receiving donations, it does, it takes, I understand that the, the transmission and the engine were donated, is that correct, Sherry?
The engine and the transmission will be donated. And I just found a couple of people who have rebuilt vehicles of this vintage, and I'm putting them all together to visit at the high school, and I'm going to call them my steering committee.
Well, this is something that's important for the heritage of our community, so we want to do that. And also, again, I can't stress enough that our staff and the people we hired for these studies, for these housing tracks, have done a fantastic job, the information. Not only do we go 300 feet of, of notification, we went 500 feet notification, and sometimes even beyond that, and multiple times. COVID has created a real issue with trying to get out to people, and people to get to us. We're doing our best that we can do, and I think we did a very, very good job of, of getting this out to the public. Yes, a lot of people aren't happy with it, but we're doing the best, we're making the decisions on what we have. Our Planning Commission approved it with some stipulations, and we addressed those. So, we're in the right direction, and we will move forward, and we'll always address the safety of our residents. Being that said, we will adjourn to Monday, November 1, 2020, 2021, at 6 o'clock PM for Eagle Scout recognition. Our next regular scheduled meeting of Laverne City Council is Monday, November 1, at 6:30 PM. We are adjourned.